Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 23, 2019 to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovic?
Yes. Linda Witkowski.
Here.
Larry Gamble.
Here.
Tim Nielsen.
Here.
Janet Evans.
Here.
Claude Lewis.
Here.
Deborah Larson.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item three is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Go move.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four is community comment. This is an opportunity for community members to voice opinions and concerns to the board. Please do not be offended when we quietly listen to you and take notes, but do not respond as the board may not discuss comments, questions, or issues that are not publicly noticed on the meeting agenda. The community comment period is 15 minutes for all comment. Please limit individual comment to three minutes. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, speak into the microphone at the table, and also sign in on the sheets at the front table. Are there any community members who would like to speak tonight? Please step up to the table and state your name, address, and sign in.
Does my time start yet? My name is Jeff Dahlberg, and I reside at 4213 West Tumble Creek Drive.
Hi.
I have some things to give you here. All right, so if I could wait to start my time, I just timed myself, it was just under 3:30, so. All right, I'm here tonight to give you two things, a petition from the Franklin Professional Education Association and survey results regarding the current salary structure here in Franklin. I've been a resident, parent, and youth coach in the community for over 12 years, and I'd like to present these to you now.
Thank you.
Pause that time.
That's fine.
So, I'm not going to go through the survey with you, I'm just going to point out two things. Five percent of teachers currently say that the salary structure is something that would keep them in the district. Eighty-two percent say they believe other teachers have left the district due to a lack of salary advancement. Having a top-tier school system has been a great benefit to my family and is one of the reasons that we moved here to Franklin. The terrific veteran teachers who work here are a big part of that. These are the people who are most responsible, of course, besides my wife and I, for my children's success, so they should be valued and respected. Whether in business or public service, if you want the best professionals, then you need a pay scale that attracts and retains them. My children and all of Franklin's children deserve the best possible educational professionals, and in order to achieve this, an attainable professional and transparent salary structure must be in place. In addition to being a resident, I'm also the spouse, son, and son-in-law of teachers, and I am hearing some truly concerning stories from and about Franklin Public Schools. As a resident and taxpayer, I'm concerned about Franklin's hiring practice and subsequent lack of salary structure. New teachers come in at $46,000 a year, a starting salary that is higher than almost every single neighboring district. These young, promising teachers' salaries then stagnate in the low 50s within three years, and these same teachers leave the districts for greener pastures. Franklin spends a great deal of resources on these new teachers, especially developing and training them to meet the high standards here, only to have them leave. Then in order to fill these vacancies, Franklin is actually spending more money on veteran staff from other districts late in summer, and from what I hear this year, three times during the school year. This practice seems to be penny-wise and pound-foolish. Franklin lures young professionals with a high starting wage only to lose those same professionals three to five years later. And then spend more money on veteran replacements, who also have to be trained in our district schools and practices. Why would the best professional educators make their careers here if you do not show them a clear, visible path for income growth in the future? It would seem to be more efficient to offer new teachers the average starting salary in the district, retain them here with an attainable professional and transparent salary structure. I've met several teachers through coaching in the community and elsewhere who I had hoped to be my own children's teachers, only to learn that they've left Franklin for Brookfield, Waukesha, South Milwaukee, and even Cudahry, where they offer actual career ladders and income growth over the course of a career. More concerning than this, I'm hearing from some family and friends in education that applicants are avoiding Franklin altogether because they have heard there is no salary structure or post-employment healthcare benefit. Instead, they're applying in the districts that have these salary structures in place and offer retirement benefits. Perhaps the most concerning thing I've heard from these same people, excuse me, is that some administrators in Franklin have, when confronted with teachers who inform them of the need to earn more, were told to, quote, "Find a roommate and get a second job." If this is true, it's unacceptable and a disservice to hiring the best and retaining the best teaching talent in the area. Teaching is a noble profession that individuals go into debt to attain and should be compensated professionally. No teacher should have to work a second job to afford a home or family. If Franklin is to be a, quote, "better place to learn" and a "better place to work," then it must offer a salary structure that is, if not better than, at least as good as the competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Hi. Thanks, Mr. Dahlberg, that was inspiring to follow. My name is Ann Zapersky, 78, 51, West Canterbury Court, here in Franklin. I have children at the high school, the middle school, and at Ben Franklin Elementary School. I'm here tonight to reference item, Agenda Item 9A, which is your class size policy. I think you guys all know I've been here a couple times since last year. My first board meeting was just almost a year ago, when I came with serious concerns about the class sizes at Ben Franklin, particularly in the third grade. Looking at numbers from tonight's open enrollment report compared to last year, I can see that not only did our third grade, now fourth grade section at Ben Franklin reduce in class size significantly this year due to hiring of additional teachers, but the average class size has gone from 24 to 27 to 22 to 24. And I just wanted to be here tonight to say thank you for that and encourage you to vote yes on this policy tonight, which looks like it will continue to offer class sizes that are reasonable and better for our students. Obviously, class size and the numbers are, you know, it's just one aspect of a child's education, and I told you a lot of times last year, it was not just about the numbers, it was about the individual needs of our students. I asked my fourth grader, Abby, what she thought about her class this year. She knew I was coming tonight, she actually asked if she could come, but she chose basketball practice instead. And she said, "Mom, I think I'm learning more this year." I said, "Really? Why, you know, why do you say that?" Abby, "I don't know. It's just not so crazy. I just don't feel like, it's just so crowded and loud and interrupting all the time." And I was like, "Well, that's, you know, that's really great." But I, you know, she seems like she's learning fine. I did go and look then at her MAP scores, and again, I'm not one who believes in only looking at scores about a kid. She's happier going to school, she's enjoying school, that's what's important to me, and that's what I've heard from other students, or students and parents in our classroom. However, specifically looking at Abby's MAP score for reading, she's not in math the same way, looking at her reading score from last year, spring to spring, she went up six points last year. Last spring now to this winter, the most recent MAP score, she's gone up 14 points. That alone shows me that she is retaining and learning and doing better in her classroom because of the smaller class size. Being in a class of 20, 21 versus 30 to 32 has been significant for my child and also from other parents that I've talked to, both at Ben Franklin and at other schools, and I hope, I did encourage them to email you and email principals and things like that, I hope that they did. But again, I just wanted to say thank you for caring about our students and the teachers who are teaching them and making Franklin a better place to learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment? Any other comment?
My name is Liz Charwitz. I live at 3909 West Heather Ridge Drive. I have a son who's in first grade at Pleasant View, and I have a daughter who'll be attending there next year for K-5. I'm here tonight to request that the board consider making an open forum for some of the changes that have been on the table for the middle school and potentially with the music programming at the grade school and middle school level. As a parent, I've seen things on the news and of course, social media, and it's hard to distinguish what is fact and what is reality, so as someone who has two children who will be in middle school someday soon, I would like to make sure that there's strong consideration of making sure that teachers who are skilled or proficient in science are teaching science instead of the two-teacher house structure. I certainly, I'm a strong writer, I would never consider teaching science or math to other people and expect them to do well in those careers or at the middle school level now that there's so much emphasis on entering career pathways with technical education. I think we're diminishing the teacher's profession and competency and best practices for our students by having people cross over. I don't know if that is what the plan is, but it'd be nice if you guys could be transparent about that and let us know. As far as taking away from the music education program, we all know that, as you guys are academics, that music education improves IQ levels in students, it also helps with their development for reading and hearing and listening in the classroom. It also helps with their identification of emotions, and also deepens their understanding with math and science. So you're doing a disservice by cutting classes or cutting corners for kids in that area that a lot of times is overlooked, so really just asking for you guys to be transparent and let us get the facts and be able to have the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Any other comment?
I'm Mike Sprague. I live at 8502 West Blackbird Court. I have a daughter in seventh grade and another daughter in fourth grade at Countrydale. We parents deserve a voice. Franklin Public Schools inspires personal success through learning experiences that focus on student needs and active partnerships with family and community. This is the mission statement of the Franklin Public Schools. It is the first statement you see when you go to the FPS website. This mission statement has not been followed in the change from the four-teacher house to the two-teacher house system at the New Forest Park Middle School. A large committee of administrators and educators convened to come up with this plan. While I'm certain that they had our kids' best interests at heart, I'm not sure that the two-teacher house is the best solution. We parents deserve a voice. When I heard about these changes, I had many questions. Will a science teacher be able to teach math as well as a 20-year veteran math teacher? What are the facts of the studies that were followed? What is the evidence that this is a more, that this is a better system than the one we have now? How much less will this system cost? Will the teachers buy in to the increased workload? And many more. We parents deserve a voice. Not one of these questions was asked after the March presentation. None of them have been sufficiently answered since. This district deserves better. We parents demand a voice.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Okay.
Dana Gint, 9011, West Hawthorne Lane. You probably know who I am by now.
Welcome. Thank you for your time.
I am here again to request your support for scheduling a public meeting to reexamine recent changes in how our community schools operate. The district's mantra aspires to make Franklin schools a better place to learn. In that spirit, I am requesting that the school board and administration schedule a public forum to build public support and community involvement for the upcoming school year. In particular, the district made a recent change to a two-teacher house system and removal of band and orchestra from elementary schools. Unfortunately, this change was made with virtually no public discussion or parental involvement. In part, because of a lack of public discussion, 240 district residents have now expressed opposition to the proposed change, which I submitted on the December 12 meeting. This was in addition to a petition stating that the core teachers do not support this change at the middle school. These parental and teacher concerns need to be adequately addressed. The district's mission statement also establishes a goal to make the district a better place to work. Unfortunately, it's clear to everyone attending this meeting this evening and prior board meetings that the district's teachers do not feel valued under the current system. But I, for one, believe that teachers' opinions should carry substantial weight when it comes to matters of the district's educational programs. Yet sadly, it appears that has not been the case. It is in no one's best interest when some of the district's best and brightest teachers are leaving Franklin Public Schools because changes are being made from the top down without input from parents and teachers, and teachers are feeling unappreciated and undervalued. I think we have many wonderful teachers in Franklin, and I want them to stay here. The final part of the district's mission statement is to build a better community. A true community is built on members supporting each other and working for a common goal. Wouldn't it be a good idea to gain the support of the 240 concerned citizens by hosting an informational forum? Why not build public support and community involvement now when the parents that have those questions could be addressed in a public forum? The communications goal stated on the website also includes an increase in two-way communication with parents and guardians. This clearly has been an issue. I understand that the school board members say they were not involved in any of these decisions, and I opinion, in my opinion, they should be. If they do not represent the opinions of their constituents, then I'm not sure what they are doing for their job. This is our request. I have a document that's being delivered to me that indicates there's 142 people that would like to request an informational forum meeting to be held at the end of February. It should be announced in the insert in the City of Franklin newsletter. I would like an answer from Dr. Mueller, if possible, if that's going to be a potential. If it's not, what is the protocol for being placed on the next agenda so parents can attend and ask questions of the administration regarding the public school changes? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Any other comment? Thank you for your comments. Hearing that there are no further comments, we'll move on to Item 5, the consent agenda. Do I, is there any board member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. I would just like to say, congratulate our Dr. Miller and Mr. Cohen and Mrs. Larson and also Rachel Fredericks and, oh yeah, also Mr. Reuter and Mrs. Reed on their presentations today at the WASB convention. Fantastic job for the district. Thank you very much. Any other announcements?
If I could just announce and congratulate, we had our district spelling bee last week, and our grand champion was Mitzen Kelly from eighth grade at Forest Park, and we have seven other, or six, five other students that'll go on to the regional competition at CSU One, so as always, a great event and words that none of us in this room probably can spell, so it's pretty impressive.
Do you know what the last word was?
I get asked that every year, but I don't.
I know you do.
But Ms. Ed Bower was our pronouncer. Do you remember the last word, Ms. Ed Barr, of the evening?
I do not.
That's all right.
I think I pronounced it.
Yeah.
Pretty complex words.
Anywhere. I'll record it next year.
Yeah, thank you. Any other announcements? Thank you very much. Item seven, school board calendar. We have a special meeting of the electors on Wednesday, February 13, 2019, here at the Education and Community Center at 5:30 PM. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, February 13, 2019, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. We have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, February 27, 2019, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. Item eight, reports, presentations, and other school board business. The, item AA, school improvement plan update with the building principals. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, good evening. I would like to welcome our principals here this evening. In fall, you heard us talk at length about our process in terms of our school improvement plans and our alignment back to the district plan, and at that time, we talked about the importance of short cycles of improvement, right? The idea that we were going to put together an annual plan, but then within that, we would be coming back frequently to the board to share out our progress. And so we have kind of our next round of indicators throughout December and early January. At the building level, then our improvement teams met and worked to analyze that data and describe really what the short-cycle actions around the improvement plan will be now through early March. And so our principals are back this evening to share that information with you, and it will be a similar format to what we did last time in the work session. So what's going to happen here in a minute is our principals will split up to the posters around the room, and will deliver a formal presentation to the board. Board members, we would ask that you divide yourselves up equally around the room, and then we'll have about seven minutes for that presentation and any follow-up questions from the board members to our principals, and then we'll rotate. It's really important that we can hold to that timeframe, and so when I prompt us to rotate, I would ask you to wrap up that conversation and move. And then our audience members, we would certainly welcome you listening in on those conversations, we just ask that you respect the dialogue that needs to take place between our principals and our board members. And so with that, we will move forward.
I'm sorry, are you going to ring a bell or something?
I'll just prompt vocally for us to...
Item 8B is the audit report, Mr. Mills, or?
Yes, we have the 2017-18 financial audit, and with us tonight, we have Mr. Brian Mecknik, partner at Riley Penner &amp; Benton CPAs, and Michelle Olshewski, our comptroller, and Mr. Mecknik will present an overview of the audit.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Through just the highlight of the audit like I have in the past, the first thing, the financial statements are presented fairly, that means that they're in accordance with accounting principles, so they're unmodified opinion, which is what you're looking for, clean opinion. We had no problems that were encountered during the audit, we had full cooperation with staff. And then we have the financial results for the operating results, we have the general fund, you had an increase in your fund balance of $2,030,000. We have your general fund, this is the non, the fund balance, we have non-spendable, which was at $420,000, which are prepaid expenses. Then we have our unassigned of $22,247. And then we have our general fund budget information, expenditures, you budgeted $56,904,000. Actual expenditures were $54,518,000. So you spent 95.81% of your budget. For revenues, you budgeted $56,449. Actual revenue was $56,549. So you received 100.18% of your budgeted revenue. Your debt activity, this year you had payments on general obligation debt of $2,975,000. Your interest expense for the year was at $2,321,000. Then we have on the government statements, we make adjustments for your retirement benefits. So we have three different benefits, we have the other post-employment benefit, so we show annual OPEB stipend cost of this year of $569,000. Contributions made were $1,313,000. Then we have our net OPEB stipend obligation, net with the deferred outflows, it's a liability of $7,681,000. And the standards have changed over the years where that wasn't the full liability. With all the GASVs that we've adopted over the years, based off the actuarial study, that's what the current liability is related to the other post-employment benefit. Same with the supplemental pension liability, we have a net liability of $7,746,000. And then we have the, a net pension asset, this is for the WRS. You make contributions in the WRS off of every payroll, and actually, with the change that the actuaries made this year based off of expected returns, there's an actual liability, or an asset this year of $3,965,000. So these, all three of these categories, they're all based off of estimates for whether it's the expected return on investment or the insurance rate, the expected increases. So these can fluctuate from year to year based on the actuarial calculation. You're for the OPEB, you have to have a new OPEB study every two years, and this is the year that you'll have a new one, and starting in for the 2000, it'll be dated as July 1st of 2018, but it'll be used for the June 30th of 2019 audit. So Jim was probably working with the actuaries already, getting that going, so.
What type of return do they project?
The interest rate, they each show different, they're pretty...
If it was in here, I didn't...
They're listed in the footnotes of the financial statements. For the WRS, the long-term expected rate of return is 7.2, and I think that's what the other ones use because they kind of follow what the WRS is using, so. And that's an average over so many years, and that hasn't changed much over the years. The medical trend rate is the big one, that they're, they're currently using 3.5%, which is probably a little low, but they're the experts in determining all this, so we go with the numbers that they have. We actually test, the testing we do related to the actuarial reports is, we look to make sure that the people that are being included in the actuary study are actually eligible for the benefits and that they're, they qualify, so we actually do a sample of testing related to those to make sure that everybody that's supposed to be in there is actually in there. Any questions on that part of the audit? We also do a uniform guidance audit, that's where you receive over $750,000 federal funding. We take a look at, we have to do a certain percentage of coverage for the testing, so we tested that, where we look at the compliance requirements specific to that program. This year, we looked at the flow through the special education. I mean, we did not have any findings that came to our attention during that testing, so that's good news. And there was one small issue that we had last year that wasn't significant, that we actually had to retest the full program again. We took a look to make sure that what was the issue with last year was fixed, and we took a look at a couple of the samples rather than looking at the whole program. And those items, we didn't have any discrepancies with those this year, so. So overall, clean audit, great job. And then we also issue the management letter, that's where we talk about the actuarial reports that, when the next one is due. If we have anything that comes to our attention, any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we note that. This year, we have the same one that we have every year, which probably 99% of school districts have that one, where it's the preparation of the financial statements. The only thing that we're really responsible for, the audit report, is putting our opinion on it. You're required to have all the appropriate disclosures, and especially with GASVs, the new GASVs that have come out, I think the report has probably increased by 15 pages over the last two years because of all the additional disclosure requirements, so we kind of take the responsibility of writing that, and you, Jim and Michelle, review the audit financial statements and say, okay, we've got questions here, this needs a change of that, so you guys do take a look at and take responsibility for it, so. So there are controls in place, but that's how the accounting standards work, so that's why we have that comment, so I would not be concerned about it, so. And then if we had any disagreements with management, we would put that in this letter, which there were none, or if management went out and got a second opinion on anything, that would be noted here as well, which we were not aware of anything, so. Any questions for me? Yes. Yes?
I've read the whole 65 pages, and it was riveting.
How many times you do those off?
I just have to ask this because on page 61, under condition, it says, "We haphazardly selected a sample of 50 students receiving free or reduced lunch." I have never seen the term "haphazardly" used in a financial, from the auditors, on a, on any comment.
That's, that was the one where we had finding, that was related to last year's audit. We do with our uniform guidance, there's certain sampling requirements that we have to do, and that's one of them. So, for the, for those students, we get the list of all the students. Either we'll go through and we'll just select a student here, there, there, or we'll take a look and we'll say, okay, there's 13 pages of students, we want to get 50 students, so we'll take every, so many and we'll count and select those people that way.
But usually, you see randomly chosen.
Right. It's, it's part of the, the sampling program that we use, that it's, it's haphazardly. So, random, for some, we use a random...
So, it's a technical term?
Correct.
Okay.
So, for some, we use a random number generator, like...
Was it a different button for that?
Correct. Haphazard is like you're going boom, boom, boom. Random goes where you, we use a random number generator. So, we'll take, like, we do that every year for, with the first and last check number for the year. We'll run it through a random number generator, and we'll examine those checks that got selected with the random number generator.
Oh.
So, he was purposefully haphazard.
Correct.
It was used last year, too.
Yeah.
Because I have it on this page from last year.
No, I didn't, I didn't catch it last year, I didn't read all 65 pages.
I think, I think this document is so informative, I just, I think it's a great document, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate the administrators being here, but if you'd like to leave, feel free.
You started your day very, very early, and I don't want you to feel like you have to be here. They have, they can see all of the documents in Board Docs and review them during the workday, but it's been a very long day for our team, so thank you for being here tonight. Go home, rest.
Good information, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item eight C, open enrollment seats, this is an action item, Mrs. Allen Larson.
Good evening. In your packet, you will see, so this is my second time through with open enrollment, so I feel like a veteran now because this is the second time. 1920, so we're getting ready. I know that it doesn't feel that way, but we're getting ready for 1920. We've rolled up the enrollment from this year to next year. We've taken into consideration any projected resident growth, working with the desired class sizes that are kind of going to be seen later tonight, but very similar to what we have done in the past as well. And then, working with Mr. Millsor on budgetary considerations as we take a look then at the approval of open enrollment seats. So, in your packet, you have the enrollment as of December 2018, so it's important to just remember that that chart is as of today. It's not the projected enrollment for 1920, so it is where we sit today across the system. And then, in the middle, you will see the recommended open enrollment seats of 67, how they fall into place as we work together to lay them out by grade level. And then, to the right, any seats open for children with disabilities by the programs there. So, very similar to last year, we're looking for approval for around the same number of seats that we approved last school year as the process begins. And then, lastly, within that motion, we're seeking the ability to kind of move or add seats if we deem we need to, once we know the actual applications that come into the system.
I have one question. These are all new seats, these are not siblings, or does this include sibling seats?
It is new seats, so if there is a family that might have a sibling in the system, they still would file for the new seat.
That's included in this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, the ninth graders, three seats? And considering, is, we have a lot of students in ninth grade, or eighth grade coming up?
Yeah, so the high school staffing's a little bit different, right? So, most of what we're considering is teacher-to-student ratio. And so, across the number of sections and looking at our current average class size for high school, it'd still be well within to take three students. The reason you see a request there is oftentimes when an application does come in for a lower primary or in the elementaries, they have a sibling that they are asking for at an upper grade level. And when we say no to the sibling at the upper grade level, they deny the seat at the lower primary. So, it's really trying to have some level of accommodation for families that have students across grade spans. But the three doesn't create an impact in class size, given where we currently sit with the number of sections we have and the current enrollment in ninth grade down there is 394, where you see that 10th grade is sitting at 404. So, the roll up with the 361, we usually see resident growth of about 30. So, we'd be sitting in about 391, and we're currently sitting at 394. So, that's where you see the three come from.
Because we sometimes get private school students.
That's in that 30 number that's in the resident growth, yes, correct.
So, none in 4K then? Because you have 20 at 5K and zero at 4K.
Excellent question. At this point, no. Given that it is a very new program for us, and we have an AM and a PM sectioning that needs to take place, we don't know yet what our current enrollment is. And our current enrollment, as it stands right now, is well under what the projected enrollment is because it's a new program. So, it's, it's giving us as a district the opportunity to settle within our, our own resident population and make sure that we've accommodated them well before we'd open any seats up. However, as Mr. Millsor and I have worked on this, we also know that within that motion, if we needed to, we would be able to add 4K seats once we're at a point of stabilization within the current numbers.
And does the new building opening up impact anything in six, seven, eight, or you're just strictly looking at your current numbers?
Again, we're taking our current numbers, rolling them up within our FTE. And if you just take a kind of a quick step forward to that class size policy and trying to keep those sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes at an under 30 marker, we're right there. And what we don't know right now is the own resident growth that might occur within there. But again, the motion allows some of that movement, but if, if I had to say today, I don't believe we'd take seats there because again, it's important we get that building right as we open it and, and settle from within before we'd see how those classes stabilize. Remember, we have more offerings and different programming for the students there, too.
So, then, I'm looking for a motion to approve 67 open enrollment seats for the 2019-2020 school year with additional seats to be added if space becomes available, and with eight seats in the speech and language program. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Is there any discussion on the motion?
If the additional seats were, were to be added, would there be board action on those, or are we granting that right now?
You're granting that right now.
We, is there a maximum that we would?
That wasn't gonna be my question, because in the past, I think we had a motion similar, but did we have an upper limit? We've never had an upper limit, just, okay. I kept it as you kept moving.
Just allows us the flexibility to, to get to that number, frankly. And if we can add a few more students, and it's happened primarily at the kindergarten level, we would add those kids. But yeah, we have not had an upper limit, but we're, we're really pretty cautious about this.
Well, and be working within the class size policy regardless.
There's a waiting list, though.
Correct.
On open enrollment?
Well, we typically see more, we most certainly see more applications than we have approved seats, yeah.
Any other discussion?
We don't typically fill them, though, either, right?
All the seats, depends on the year and how the applications fall. Because again, if you, if you look, certain grade levels have a very, certain number, like a nine or a seven, right, in second or third grade. And so, we don't know until we see the applications if we'll even have nine applications for second grade.
And you can still apply to three school districts total?
I believe so. I don't believe that rule changed.
What was that, Jim?
When you apply for open enrollment, you can apply to three school districts in case you don't get accepted to the one you want. Which is why there is a waitlist, I believe, so that if you applied to Franklin, but you really wanted Greendale, then...
Correct. And again, it's, it's kind of that same thing, you know, if I'm a mom and I have a second grader, Greendale may not have seats, and I may not know that until they get through their process, too. So, it's a safety piece for a, a family to be able to apply to multiple districts.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, then. We had a motion by Mrs. Larson and a second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Then, we move on to item HB, the long-term capital facility projects. We have Dr. Miller and Mr. Millsor.
I'll defer to Mr. Millsor. You saw in your Board Docs a cover letter describing the reason why you have this document. And I'll defer to him for any specifics that he would like to add to what he's provided you to date.
Right. You know, in the past, we used to have a very long list of maintenance items that also included these long-term capital items, or at least some of them. And it just became difficult to tell the difference between what was a long-term capital item and what could actually come up in the maintenance list that we do in a year. So, we decided to separate those last December. Your, your list for maintenance was much smaller and was only the maintenance items, and this is just the other half of it, the long-term capital facility needs. And some of them were on that list, some of them have been added. But as we look forward, it's always good to have an idea of what's out there in the future, what's coming, what do we think we're going to need based on what we know now. And that's really what this list represents. It'll change over time as we find out new things, our programs change, maybe we deliver instruction in a different way, we add a program. We could have changes in this, but this is our, our best look at it right now. And we've just divided it into two sections. Ones in green, those would be the things that we'd want to do first. The ones in blue would be the ones that we would do later. And some of those might be hooked to student enrollment, for example, in elementary school. We wouldn't build that until we had a need for that. Some of the other ones, we could use now, but we're really not in a position to go forward with them. Looking at our funding, our Fund 46 probably be the main source of funding to begin with, along with loans, bonds, and referendum. That probably covers how we'll get all of this money over time or not get this money over time. And that's the next step in the process that we'll be working on is to determine how will we fund these projects in green. You know, the first one is already funded within our budget. But beyond that, when will we do them and how will we fund them? And we'll be coming back with that information in the future. And we'll keep updating this information as we go on, and we'll bring it back to the board so that you can see it when we've made changes. And I, I wouldn't go through every, every item, but if you had questions about a particular item, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, each capital project comes to the board for approval, is that correct?
Right. These would, if, if we said, well, we're going to do one of these, then it would come to the board, right?
This would be part of that December meeting, so well in advance of when we start talking about actual budget. You know, we just had a meeting, Marie's talking about some of the capital improvements and stuff. Or was that more of a recap meeting?
The ones we talked about in December?
Yeah.
That was just the maintenance piece of it.
Right, that was maintenance. But I mean, would this be the same type of timeframe?
Would it be the same? It could be. It could be in a given year, we wouldn't make any changes to this. And it could be that we would, like the land purchase, for instance, we probably can't wait till December for that one. That one will come back to the board sooner, sooner than that, as we're, we're out looking and finding properties. So, we'll probably bring those items to the board as needed or as we, we get to them. And if, if the December timeframe works out, we could pair it with the, the maintenance.
Yeah, and it wouldn't have to necessarily be December, but I think the reason why we started having the December meeting was because these, the maintenance projects were coming up as we're talking about the budget.
Right.
And we found that things, the ball was already rolling, things were already going. We found out that these were the maintenance parts that were in the budget, and there really wasn't much of an opportunity for discussion or changing a course. Whereas, if we had this meeting in December, we're well in front, so if there was, if there would be a problem at the board level, then we could rethink it. That's the only reason I was thinking about this well in advance.
Right, we'd bring it well in advance. And we'd be working on them. If we thought we were getting close, we could bring it to the board and have a discussion with it at any point before we started doing that budget.
So, the projects on the list, I mean, I don't know if I would support a recreation department facility, so do I say I don't support this? I mean, I don't know if I want it on the list. Do I, do I have a way to take it off the list, or do, do we have a way to discuss whether it should be on the list?
Yes, you could, you could voice that now, as you have.
Thanks. I would like to hear maybe.
Or really, the time would be when it comes forward as a proposed project. If it comes forward and we say, here's, here's a project that we're going to do, and it's that one, and here's how we think we're going to pay for it, here's what it's going to be used for, that would be the time for you to come forward and say, okay, I don't, I don't agree with that, and, and here's why you don't agree with it, and the board could discuss it.
Are these listed in priority?
No.
Can you put them in priority? Can you put them in any kind of time sequence? Based on available funding? No, Jim, but I think you can do better than green and blue.
No, really, it can't. The, the green are, are in an order, probably, as we'll hit them. Those are coming up soon, and that's probably the order that we'll be reaching them. In the blue, it would depend, you know, if we had a, if all of these subdivisions start and they all have elementary students, and there's five elementary students per building, boy, that's going to rise right to the top. Some of the others might come forward if the needs are there. Really, the, the ones in the blue are just saying, these are out there in the future, and when we need to do them, or when we're planning on doing them, then we'll bring them to the board and say, these are coming up, and the need for this is, is now.
So, you're saying, then, the green are within the near future, meaning within the next six months or year?
Probably the land is within the next six months.
All the land?
All the land.
One and two?
Probably one and two.
Six months?
Mm-hmm. For baseball, maybe this summer. And then, the recreation building, I mean, that might be a year or two in there somewhere.
My favorite subject, the locker rooms?
Locker room, yeah, the locker rooms are, are in there, too. That's one that I'm, I'm really working hard to figure out, that funding mechanism for us, so that we can go ahead with that piece.
I don't think it has to be three, $3.9 million either, though, or what, where was, where was it?
Nine points, nine points seven.
Nine point seven. I mean, that, that is including a lot of stuff. I mean, whereas, the dire need is in those locker rooms.
Right. What we don't want to do is go in and put new lockers, and then in two years rip them all out and make something nicer. And the plan that we've worked with, which we'll bring to the board later, I think this spring, for the high school, the overall plan that the coaches helped with, made the current PE locker rooms into athletic locker rooms. And they work for that, but if we make them into nice athletic locker rooms, they don't work for PE locker rooms. So, unfortunately, if they were the same thing, we could just fix those two locker rooms and, and then be done with it and wait for the next piece. But the, one of the large pieces in that is new FIAD locker rooms that are the right size, the right number of lockers, higher ceilings than we have in there, you know, a nice light environment. environment. And then reconfiguring the current ones to be more for athletics and being set up that way. And then redoing the usage around them. There's all kinds of sports that are trying to use the same spaces, as well as the dancers that are, for the Spring Musical, are trying to be in. There's just too much in that building for the large spaces. So this also would take care of that, because on top of those FIAD locker rooms, there would be a very large space that could be used by any of those groups. It also fixes the swim locker rooms, which are in similar condition, and creates out of that space a family swim locker room for the community. So when you look at everything that's doing, it's really excellent things that need to be done. And if we can't do that within, let's say, a year, if we couldn't start it, not this summer, but next summer, then we probably have to do what you're suggesting and go in and just fix them, put the new lockers in, paint fixtures, and then try and reuse as much of it as possible when we move forward. But that's the planning that we're going through on that one.
Are you adding new space here for 9.79? Or just renovating existing?
It adds new space.
It adds space where, I guess?
North of the high school.
We're adding a floor.
North side.
We're adding a floor, or we're adding a building?
No, no, no.
You're adding on to the high school on two levels in that case, and renovating the pool, locker room space, and the current FIAD locker rooms.
How many, how much square footage?
I'd have to look. It's only a high-level plan at this point. Anytime an architect draws something, you get the sense that it's done, but it's not. It's almost like a hand drawing on a napkin at that point. This will work, it's got good measurements, but there's really nothing behind it. And that's the piece that I was saying we'll bring to the board later this spring to show you what that group came up with for using, really, all of the rest of that space north of the high school and within the driveway there. Kind of planning all of that out far into the future to say, this is what we need, can't have it all right away, but let's plan for it so that we're not building something that ruins our chances at what we need.
I'm kind of with Linda on the recreation department expansion, because we're a school board, and we have facilities like elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and now we're building a recreation building. But we're doing this recreation for the community because we have the assets, the facilities available, and we're trying to fully utilize them, and I think that that's great. But I don't understand how the philosophy of getting into recreation is the school board's responsibility. I don't understand why that's not the city's responsibility. We'll do what we can, but if there's more wanted, why is that falling on a school, just because we have buildings?
Because we run the recreation department, the school district does.
Because we have assets that we want to share with the community.
I understand.
It's not our core mission.
The school board doesn't, the school district doesn't do it.
It's not our core mission.
Yeah, and then we're going to go out and build a special building to expand it. I don't get that.
It's been made clear to us that we don't have the room for some of our programs that we run. I mean, Mr. Anderson has come here and said, the city won't do it. The city will not do it.
Why don't we have the room for some of the programs? Is that because the Croatian Eagles are renting the gym to practice soccer during the winter? They're not necessarily part of the school. They're not a dance team of the school, they're not a gymnastics team, they're not a baseball team, or anything. I mean, we're reaching out to the community, wonderful, but we're sharing what we have available for them. And now we're going to go out and, and this is projecting almost $4 million to add to that.
With all due respect, you know, there's a large population of people who don't have children in the school, in this community.
And are elderly, yeah.
Who support the schools. So they are people who support what we do in our schools. So we need to engage with our community, we need their support, and we want them to be active, we want this to be a healthy community. So I'm very proud that this school district runs the recreation department, and we have so, we're out of space because this community wants to be involved. It's good for the community, which is good for the schools. That's how I feel about it.
And those programs have been pushed out of the schools. They're generally daytime programs for seniors and people who are home during the day, and because we're full, our classrooms are full of students, which that's our primary mission, they've all been forced out, and they don't have any programs anymore. In different communities, the school district does a recreation program, and in certain communities, the city does it. And usually, when the school district has taken it over, like in our case, it's because we want to get control of what's happening in our buildings and be on top of that. But by taking it over, we took over the whole responsibility of community education and recreation. So there are those populations that are underserved, and in the surveys, we did, vast majority want to see that kind of programming. And this facility is coming from that separate fund that we have for community service. It's not coming from school district dollars that would otherwise go to students.
So does it?
Thank you.
What about revenue limits? We have to operate the building. We're not just building it, we have to operate it.
Mm-hmm.
Does it impact revenue limits?
No.
Because why? I guess, why is it not? It's not our boss.
It would be a recreation facility. It wouldn't be the district's facility.
So I guess, like I said, I think it's the city's responsibility, and I, it's not our core mission. So...
I think when we have something closer to a plan, or we get closer to actually talking about this becoming a reality right now, we understand it's five on the list. I think we can kind of get into the weeds of this a little bit more.
Yep.
Right now, this is just a list with just, hey, this is what we're thinking. And so I don't know that we have to spend more time trying to figure this out right now, personally. At least on that item. I know, I was looking at the tennis courts on here. We've been talking about tennis courts for the longest time, and I see that's in blue, and then I saw turf for baseball and softball in green, and I thought there was some disconnect there. But then I read the narrative, and I get it with moving from summer to spring, how that could be, you know, something that we moved in front of the tennis courts. But again, those are all things that we can have discussions about, as to how this piece of the puzzle is going to work.
Right.
So is this something that'll come back to us each, you know, each year, and we can talk about the order and the plans and the shuffle? Otherwise, I feel that it's going to come back to us, we're going to pick a project, it's going to show up in the budget, and then that's going to be it. As opposed to thoughtfully arranging these in a more scheduled way with funding tied to it, in a more coherent plan, I think that would serve us better than just a list with colors at this point. I think we can do better with this plan, then.
Well, we would be talking and approving these item by item, not just as part of the budget, correct?
You'd be approving them as they come up, just like the land that's in there that's in the budget went through that same process. The next one would go through a similar process to that. If it was turf for baseball, it would be the same kind of thing. It would come to you as a project, and it would be attached to the budget, but because it's not a maintenance item, and we'd be using Fund 46, it would be, it would take on that kind of discussion, but it would be the same type of process.
Everything doesn't rely on a list. I mean, the baseball came up because summer baseball changed, so if you had that on a different part of the list, it's got to change, and...
I'm not suggesting we put it in place and never change it. I'm just saying. I mean, it's called a five-year, you know, a five-year plan, an order and a schedule, and each year you look at it, as things change, you rearrange them. It's not, it's not a complicated concept, planning. Set the projects, you know, in some order, by year. We're planning to use Fund 46 for this, borrow for this. It's all very fluid and colorful right now. So, and to your point, Tim, we're not going to solve this right now, but I would ask administration to come back with a more coherent plan that we can talk about. And if there's some things that we really don't want to see in the plan, we can take them out then, not as they keep coming up and single decisions.
I agree.
Who said that?
Pardon? I did.
Yeah.
Then make a motion, and we'll vote on it.
Is it a motionable item? I mean, is it something rather than just a request that we have some timetable with these items, you know?
You can't make a request like that unless the whole board approves of it, because you're asking for, you're asking for something we don't, might not all agree on.
That would be the purpose of the plan, is so that we could all agree on the plan and have some...
This isn't a plan, this is a list of projects, so you're asking for a plan.
I'm suggesting that maybe it should be turned into a plan that we can review annually and talk about, whether we want those projects on there or not.
I mean, a lot of this depends on the city, too, and the land that's available right now, which is why these land things are up at the top, because we're running on land in Franklin for schools.
We should talk about each project, then. Yeah, I can agree with that, but some of these other things, you know, why, the tennis courts, to Tim's point, there's some urgency there, but it's number eight. But what does that mean in terms of next year, two years, three years?
Urgency to you, but to me, to me, that's more the county should be doing, tennis courts.
Why is it even on the list? That's what, I could probably agree with you.
That's on the list, well...
Then how do we communicate that to our administration, that, you know, tennis courts should be the county's thing, take it off the list?
Because it's at the, it's not in, it's in blue, it's not urgent.
They're working on it. He's considering it.
It's a, it's a, it's a possible need, but it's not, all right. Make a motion.
That's all good, good points that maybe administration needs to know, that you...
Well, I understand, Linda, but they also have new elementary school on here for $23 million. I mean, we're not going to be talking about that anytime soon.
I would like to know at what point, what population increase is that assumed in order to get to that point? What is the growth rate? Have you looked with the, worked with the city to determine potentially, you know, growth rates, where we would meet that?
Those are all guesses, yeah.
I'm only asking for your guess. I'm not asking you to give me the answer. I mean, you have to make an assumption.
You're asking for an answer, and you're asking us to make guesses after guesses after guesses on how quickly the lots will develop, and when this would happen, and where it would be. We've always taken the approach that we calculate what would our total number of students be when all of Franklin is built out based on the city's master plan. We don't try and take a stab at when that will happen. We know it's out there, we'll need another elementary, possibly even two, but we don't work on that until we're getting close and our space is being used up, and you have a number of years that you'd have to have a referendum, get that passed, design a building, build a building, and get it ready. So we'll see it coming, but we don't know when it will happen. And it seems like an exercise in futility to take each one of these and put them in order, and then change them every year as we get new information. Things that are farther down on the list will be triggered, that'll be triggered by enrollment. But I really don't see a gain by estimating when that would happen.
So you're telling me the new elementary school is based on full build-out of the city? That's what that new, number 12 is based on?
When we get to full build-out, we would definitely need another elementary, and depending on the way the southwest portion of the city develops, it's possible we would need two.
And how many lots are there? I mean, you know, I mean, there is data behind these guesses. This is not just, you know...
How is that relevant for a discussion tonight? This is just a list of things that they have.
That is right.
I don't need to know how many lots are available in Franklin before we have to build an elementary school on January 23rd, 2019.
Well, he just said that, he knows that. What full build-out means, there's a plan out there. He looked at it, and it equals so many assumed families, equals so many kids, equals elementary school. It's not, there's models and scenarios that are behind these things.
Why do we, why do you need to know it tonight?
I don't need to know it tonight, but I'm asking that, based on the scenarios that they've probably discussed, you can put these in an order by year.
When I looked at this document, I looked at it as a fluid document, sort of a news flash, so to speak, for lack of a better word. So when it comes to purchasing land, and we, that is an agenda item, we can say, oh, yeah, we've discussed that, and here are the comments that went with it. That's the way I looked at this document. I didn't look at it as a document that was tying us to have something done on this date and in this year, and this is how much it's absolutely going to cost, because we don't know how much these things are going to cost. We don't know that 12 tennis courts are going to cost X number of dollars. But I looked at it as a fluid document, an informational piece, that when these things do come forward, we're not sitting there saying, oh, why were we blindsided? But we weren't. We were told, we were given a little bit of forewarning here. Now, when this comes back to us, we look at it, we go, oh, yeah, we did talk about that, and those were the reasons you gave us. Do you have any other reasons that we should approve this, or do you have any other reason we should look at this? I think that that's all this document is. I don't think it was meant to open a can of worms and ask for dates and times and flow charts and project, I don't think that's what it was meant for. And when that time does come, then certainly that information is absolutely important to ask for. But at this point, I don't, I don't believe that it is. And correct me if I'm wrong on what this document means.
Well, that's exactly it.
Okay.
But your comment that when it comes back, one of these in a budget, we can say, oh, yes, we talked about it. Is this, we talked about it?
No, I didn't say...
This is, you know, we saw it.
I hope I didn't say that, that we talked about it, that we were informed about it, that it was a possibility, it's on this fluid list. This list is so much better than the projected maintenance list that we used to get. It was page after page after page. This is so much more succinct, and it has a reason behind it and an estimated cost, and I just think that that's all this is right now. It's not asking to purchase land tonight, it's not telling us how much, how many tennis courts we can build for X number of, that's not what the purpose of this document is right now. I think it's just an informational piece. And when, like I said, when it comes time for that, absolutely, you should ask your questions. But I don't think that's what the intention is right now, to have this projectile, you know?
Can you explain what you mean by, when you say, when it comes time?
When administration, when administration comes forward with an action item and says, this is, we'd like, we'd like your permission to go ahead...
And do it now.
To do this. This is why it is time to do this, here is our reason, here is the data that goes with it, here's the research that goes with it. That's what I'm talking about. And then we can open up this whole discussion, certainly.
About that one project that they're proposing at that one time?
If it's one project at that one time, yes, absolutely.
We don't have to do it one at a time, we can have some vision, some idea of priorities.
I feel like this is the vision, though. Right here is the vision. Here's the vision. If money were no object, okay? If money were no object, here's the vision.
Right. We know that money is an object.
We're not ready for that.
We know that money is an object.
Right, that's right. And so we're not proposing doing anything right now. This is your informational piece, that's all it is.
Well, that was my question, as far as then the green, maybe at least in the green, we should be talking, is this a near-term project, or is it a long-term project? Or, you know, what is long-term? What's the definition of long-term? What's the definition of timing on the five in the green?
I think Jim gave us that definition.
Well, he did. He mentioned, he mentioned the first couple.
Six months.
The first couple could be relatively soon.
Right.
And then the others are within the next six to 12 months.
The last, the last two, four, and five would be a year or two out, if we're able to do them, if I'm able to pull that off. If not, especially number four... If not, especially number four would be much scaled down. Like I said, if we can't, if we can't project that we're going to do it in a year, then we're going to do something a lot smaller, but we'll do it this, this year.
This year.
And that's, and that's perfect discussion. I mean, that's the kind of discussion that I think you might be looking for.
And it'll be a discussion that would happen separate from when the budget's in front of us, because we have some idea to plan, that's exactly what we talked about.
Right, right. That's what I was concerned.
The next time we see this is not when it's going to be an action item on an agenda.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that was my concern also, Tim.
All right, we're going to get a chance to-
We have a good discussion about these items as they come up one at a time.
The whole, but it's just going to be one at a time? I mean, there's priorities here.
Can we, can we move on?
I think we're spending enough time on this. Not a motion you want to make, I think it's time to move on.
We understand your point.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, are we going to be borrowing money for the 9.7 million?
For the, the project at the high school?
Yes.
Uh, I would say on that one, we would probably have to.
And we borrow money, we have a referendum, correct?
Excuse me?
If we, if we borrow money, we have to have a referendum.
No. No, you could borrow money within the revenue limit.
Oh, and not have a referendum?
Right. Having a referendum takes that debt out of your revenue limit.
I guess I'm not sure the difference between the referendum we did have and then this one, I'm not clear.
It's a well exceeded a revenue limit.
You were, you were asking the community if you could tax for additional money for a school, and the community said yes, so you can increase the amount that you're spending on long-term debt to that extent. If it were a smaller project like that, that you could combine with your money in, in Fund 46, pay for part of it that way and part of it in some other way, bond perhaps, then it would be just that extra that you would pay for, that you could pay for that within the budget and within your revenue limit.
Are you talking the debt service on that bond has to be within the, the revenue limit?
Yes.
I'm glad it is, yeah.
Moving on to item 8E, the Forest Park construction update. Ms. Millsor and Dr. Miller.
I'll just begin with a few updates about our progress in terms of transitioning to our new school. You've seen weekly that I've sent you the messages that we're continuing to provide to our families regarding the new school. We will be talking about a number of things coming up regarding just the move and, and student schedules, et cetera. Mr. Millsor and I had a little chat tonight about perhaps sharing more with the families about the actual structure of the building and how it's been designed and the learning spaces, so maybe including some more information about that. We had a very successful informational meeting with parents last week for fifth and sixth grade, lots of parents attended, it was very positive, there was great feedback from that. I think it was over 300 parents were there, it was very, very positive. We've begun our professional development with our staff, and I would just like to point out that the staff that will be teaching at Forest Park next year, one-third of that staff is currently teaching the subjects that they will be teaching next year. Another third of that staff has taught another subject in the last five years, three to five years, and then the other third of the staff basically is staff that has kind of taught one subject for probably 10 years or more. So we have a mix of staff and their professional needs, and we're doing what we need to do to meet their individual needs professionally. They are in classrooms, having the opportunity to observe other teachers and doing that. In February, we're beginning our professional development, where we'll bring them in and actually work with them through the curriculum, and we have our en-course staff working through their new courses now. So we'll continue all that professional development into the spring.
Does that happen, when does that happen?
We will get some subs for teachers during the workday and bring them in and work with them. Is there anything you want to add to that, Mr. Reuter?
Just that we're meeting, we're, we're being responsive to the needs, so in, as Dr. Miller alluded to, in February, we're working with certain departments with facilitated work by myself, our coaches, Mrs. King and Mr. Mizziak, and then based on the feedback we receive from the teachers after those work sessions, we'll determine the next month's PD needs and differentiate per teacher. As you heard, Dr. Miller, we have different demographics of experiences, teaching multiple subjects as well as multiple grade levels.
And then the last thing is, I'd like to move forward with posting for a new associate principal at the middle school. We will have over 1,100 students at our middle school. It is appropriate to have a principal and two associate principals for a school that size. We need to do that for safety reasons, we need to do that because it is a very large staff that requires supervision, and we need to do that because at a middle school, there's a number of activities and athletics and other things going on that require administrative support. So I am planning, I'm moving forward to post for that associate principal position at the middle school, and that will be built into the staffing budget and we will be within budget.
Is that always in the budget, or?
It will be in the budget for next year.
For next year?
Mm-hmm, starting July 1.
Does that come from like retirements and?
Well, there's, there's a normal attrition within a budget, a staffing budget, you have some people retiring, et cetera, and, you know, there's a sum of money, and Ms. Elihausen has to stay within that sum of money as we staff for the school year within budget, and this position will be within that staffing plan and that budget. So if Mr. Millsor would like to talk about the construction aspects.
All right. On the, on the outside of the building, it's pretty much finished, there's still some metal panels that are going on, on the areas that say Tyvek on them right now, there's just a couple of them left. Inside the building, in the office area, the drywall's in, it's painted, the cabinets are being installed. In the gym, I was in there the other day, the bleachers were coming in, and they were bringing in box after box after box, and in the, in the gym, they had the floor almost entirely covered with a, a thick plastic with cardboard over it, so that as these people were walking around, they weren't ruining our brand-new floor. And the, the back of the building was, was just completed so that the semi delivering it was able to back up into the loading dock and, and use that. So it was, it was interesting to see the, the building functioning already when it isn't even done. In February, the, the logos, logos will be painted on the end walls of the gym, and then that'll be pretty much done. In the kitchen, the ovens and other appliances are in and being installed right now. In the student commons, it's completely painted, the ceiling's finished, and they're starting to wrap the columns in, in wood, it's going to look really sharp. And then in Area B, which is the, the area facing Forest Hill, which is the, the least far along, the lockers have been installed, the classroom cabinets have been installed, all the lighting is in, and the last couple of days, they were putting in the floor in the art room, and it's a, a special floor in there that they were putting down. So we're, we're getting very close. It's interesting to see. Other, other four to six weeks, I'd say, and it'll be done.
And what about the computer wi, wiring, is that all, are they doing that, or when, is that all in already?
Uh, they're still pulling some in, in that last wing, but otherwise, it's all in.
And furniture, when does the furniture come? I know she posted those pictures, but there's like no-
No furniture, yeah.
Furniture, when does that arrive?
Uh, furniture will probably be in March and April it'll start to come. We have to, we're, we're purchasing the furniture and taking the lead on that, not having them do that, so we want to wait until we take control of the building to have that showing up. And then since we have a nice, long lead time, our staff will be assembling furniture and, and re-cleaning and putting down, like the floor finishes on that we like to have on the, the floors and so forth through the spring.
And are we, the old furniture is all gone? Is there anything brought over, or?
Some things are brought over, there's not a lot being brought over. A lot of it was old and it's not, it doesn't work for the instruction that we're doing in that building. Some of the other school buildings are, are taking some of that, and the rest of it, we sold to the company that's doing the demolition.
What's already been sold then?
Today at the convention, if you went through the, I don't know what you call it, the marketplace, the center's room, yeah, Forest Park was highlighted on several booths and-
Really?
It was very nice to see, and I talked with Dan from Cullen, and he said the bleachers were in today, and he said, they just sparkle, and he was just so excited about it, too, so that was kind of nice to hear.
Right. Yeah, I think we have the board tour in another month, and you, you just kind of love it. It's just fabulous.
I think it's so different driving by and seeing, because the lights are on, and you can see right, right in, which is, no other school is, is like that, where you can-
Is there any community open house planned or anything?
Yep, we're in the process of planning all of that. Thank you, thank you.
Item 8F, the treasures report is available in the board docs library. And item nine, school board liaison reports, personnel and policy, policy 4240 class side size is an action item. Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. This policy was something that's been in the works for a while, coming before the board after some of the discussions from last year and leading into this year. So thank you for the wonderful feedback today and community comments, it's nice to see some of those differences and how they play out, it's good to see. And rather than, when Valley started working on this, rather than doing some, some changes to it, this was just a total rewrite. And so changed some of the language, I had a few, few points I threw in there, and, but I thought it was a good collaborative effort, but I'd like to throw it over to Valley to kind of, anything she wants to add and highlight?
Sure.
It's a pretty short policy, it's pretty straightforward, but I think the cleanup and the changes were, were, were great.
Yeah, I, the work on the policy was, there was a lot of involvement, the principals did look at it, the directors looked at it, and then in working with Mr. Nielsen, we, we have a revised policy, it's just easier to kind of look at it this way, otherwise the track changes were unmanageable. The important part about the policy is that we understand that there are a lot of factors that we consider when designing or determining final class size. And overall, the philosophy of this policy sits right in that first paragraph, in that we also understand it's instrumental to strong instruction. The guidelines are that, they are, they are guidelines now, they are intended to be followed 99.9% of the time, but there are variations that will come as a result of certain courses or within a department, or even potentially within a grade level, and so there has to be enough flexibility within the policy to be able to manage those types of circumstances or situations. When you look at this policy in comparison to the, the current policy, there are some changes to the way in which those guidelines are designed in, in the lower elementary, it is really to stay under a certain benchmark, to so, to be less than a certain number is our goal, and you see a, a separation between the lower primary and the upper primary in those guidelines. Same holds true, though, with the middle and the high, and you see some consistency across our system as you enter that kind of grade three through with the goal being 30. Physical education is a capacity or a facility issue, so there are some constraints that we have to kind of live by as a result of the facility structure. And then in the last part of the policy, it really just again sets the fact that there might be variations. For example, we might have a singleton art class, and by kids' first choice, there might be 31 children that want to take that class. So what we have to do as an administration is talk that through in working with our staff, determine whether it's best to run that section at 31 or 32, maybe it'd be, then turn those kids away in order to stay underneath that benchmark and make them choose a second choice. So it, and it may be with the art teacher, that may be her desire to run that course because it's part of a programming strand. So those are the types of variations that occur, no different than, it might be November and we get three new enrollments into the system, and they happen to push, say, a second grade class up over that 25 number, how do we make accommodations for that that are the most effective and least disruptive for students at that point in time? So that's all kind of built within the policy and keeps the policy at that guideline level.
And one last thing to add is that you'll notice that it was last reviewed in 2001, so it's definitely due, and, and the changes are brought current with our 4K coming in and the desired class size is adjusted accordingly, so.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy, board policy 4240 class size. Do you hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion?
Is there any minimums for high school classes? Is that, I mean, you took maximums, but are there minimums that one would run a class? Is that in this policy, or should it be, or is it another place?
It's more in the course guide, because that, you'll see in there, there are some classes that, I mean, I'll jump in on her, but right, they have to meet a certain minimum, and that's more in the course guide.
There is some recommendations within the high school guidelines that are utilized, there is a minimum class size policy that exists in the instruction series, I believe, or the student series. I feel like it's a 6,000 series numbered, but it really doesn't set a specific number. And I, again, it, it, it is based upon the way in which we enroll, we use a, a number to divide by, so, you know, we target to be at classes to be around that 27, 28 number. So when we're dividing, it is important that we look at that so that we see section sizes across the board. When you're dealing with a, a facility like a high school where you have children that are also choosing choice and they might want a particular music, you will see variations in class sizes. In, in a pure sense, they'd all look like they might be at 27, but in an actual application, because you want orchestra and I might want band, they're not going to fall exactly that way. But that helps set it. The minimum to run the course, we also look at whether it's a capstone course, whether it's a brand-new course in order to kind of seed the ability to do that, but you do not see class sizes in single digits at the high school on a regular basis. The other thing that you have to take into consideration when you're staffing is it's the numbers at that point in time, and you always have enrollment and drops that occur also.
So as Mrs. Spursky said, you, you have to look at the individual needs of the students in the classes, and this allows Dr. Miller to do that, and as I said to Dr. Miller this week, now she's able to use a critical eye when problems arise like they did this year, so I really like the policy now. Students aren't just the number in here, so, thank you for the work, thank you for your input. Yeah, any other comment? Okay. Motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mr. Nielsen, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Folks, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. And, we're on liaison reports still, okay, board liaison reports, do we have any liaison I do, just, I'm on the board of control, CISA One Board of Control, and my meeting this past week, it was interesting because we talk about personalized learning there, and they're working on expansion of the personalized learning, and they told us this past week that they're expanding to Chicago Public Schools to provide personalized learning into their curriculum there, so it's kind of exciting that they're looking to Wisconsin to help in Chicago Public Schools, so I just wanted to report that about CISA. So, did you have something, Linda?
I was, I'm not sure, I, I went to a Frank Education Foundation meeting, but that may have been since we've met, I'm not sure, but we are meeting again tomorrow with the Education Foundation. I did, I was involved with their communication committee meeting, so, but I'll wait till the, the actual board meeting and I'll report next time on that.
Thank you. And then item nine, see, school and community engagement visits. Did we have any? And then, um, item nine, C, school and community engagement visits. Did we have any?
I had a, I went to the PTA meeting at Southwood Glen. They asked that I come in and do a presentation on what does the board, what is it, what are we working on? That quickly developed into, uh, comments and an explanation of the two-house, four-house system. Uh, I was afraid it would. Um, I explained what we were doing, why we were doing it, how we got there. And, uh, I got some nice comments back that they appreciated the, uh, input. So it went well.
Thank you. Um, on December 11th, um, I went to the 10th grade inroads teen sleep research team presentation at the high school. Um, Dr. Miller was there, Ms. Bowden was there. Um, uh, they reported that 50% of high schools across the nation begin school before 7:30 a.m. And they believe that schools should flip their start times with either the elementary or the middle schools, including our school district. Um, they said that teens need more sleep and re- research shows that. And it's true. It does show that. Um, but they also said that, um, students drink more caffeine nowadays. And, um, they said it's too hard to convince a student to give up electronic devices when they're up late at night. And, um, they, we had a, there was a good discussion by the, the staff and people present in the audience about things that they could do to be, um, to advocate for healthy ways to, um, get more sleep for teens. Um, this is not something new that school districts are trying to, uh, students are trying to start school later for high school students. It's been going on for several years, mostly in the West and, and moving, um, across the nation. So, um, they are going to investigate further, um, how they can get the word out to students to try to get more sleep. Um, but for, for the inroad students, they did a great job presenting, very good job. It was, um, six students presenting. And, um, they understand that there are fiscal implications and transportation implications. And it's not just so easy just to flip and childcare implications. So, uh, it was a good presentation by the students. I was glad to be there. So, anyone else?
I did get a chance to see, um, hear the, the Voices presentation, event at the high school. It's like a TED Talk and, um, some really interesting, um, presentations. The, um, spoken word was a performance, uh, I don't know the name of the student, but it was really a pretty powerful performance. Uh, and all of these are, it just, um, some are pretty well-attended, but I wouldn't miss it next time either. It's, uh, cause it's kids just kind of talking what's important to them, topics. Um, I have to try and remember what they all were, but.
Did they record it like a TED Talk? To make it, is it?
They don't record it, but it's the same format. They come out and they, uh, you can see that they're trained to present, you know, and they have a video or a, some data or visual, you know, behind them. Um, they have a student that's running a nonprofit. She was, I also heard her speak last year also. She's running a nonprofit, trying to bring shoes to, uh, Jamaican villages that she visits. Interesting to see our students, you know, the variety and the, uh, the range of kids. But all, well, well done.
Thank you. Anything else? Hi, thank you. Item 10, school board meeting debriefing. Any comments?
I just want to say that, you know, we have our values, you know, pride is one of them. And I kind of felt that point of pride when I was, after I left the presentation. It was Franklin up there.
Oh, yeah.
It was a, you know, a three-year journey to where we are. It's, it was a good feeling. That was our work, so.
Yeah, um, very good comments in the, uh, in the audience. Uh, usually when you have presentations, um, from students, you hear just comments about awesome, things like that. But it was nice to hear our staff get, um, the comment of awesome. So, yeah.
How did it feel? Something you want to do again?
What's that?
How did it feel? Something you guys want to do again?
Oh, I love that.
I think we should take the show on the road.
All right.
It did make me feel really proud though. I mean, when Nick brought us together and we would practice our presentation, just, yep, we practiced. And, um, when I watched the video and I saw all of those good things, it just, it, it made me beam with pride, you know? And I was just there to ride on their coattails, you know? I was just there to tell my little bit that I know. But it was just, I ju- I just felt so proud to know that my children had the opportunity to go to Franklin Public Schools and that I got to be part of that. Just, it just warmed my heart so much and I was so filled with pride, really.
Well, she has a sense of humor.
That is a, a very, you know, the stories for, I mean, these are kids, these are new kids and really impacted by that. It was, it adds a nice personal-
Thank you.
Story to it.
Thank you.
All right. Future agenda items. Uh, uh, we have the Pleasant View Elementary School presentation scheduled for February 13th. We'll have state convention reports on February 13th. School counseling program presentation, February 13th. And then the board, um, tour of the new Forest Park Middle School on February 27th, for the time to be determined. So, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:32.